All right, it is 5:30. I'll call this special, or special. This regular city council meeting for June 7th, 2021 to order. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please, please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, please note that all members of the council are present. The first action on our agenda today is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bowler.
I would like to see number six, a new bill. Move to our, to the whole meeting, that's the, under the whole word.
Okay, so are you requesting that we delete that off of the agenda and approve the agenda with, with that missing?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to move forward with the agenda with six C deleted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Counselor Bowler, can you just give us some reasoning on why we're moving that to the? And then I would just ask if members of the HR committee want to give a rebuttal on that or, or some discussion on, on why we're moving it there? Please.
I believe if, if a council member has a question about it, it should be taken off the agenda for the time being.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, fair enough. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Approval of the minutes for Monday, May 17th, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the transfers and payments of claims. Going to the 101 general fund is $188.65, and that's coming from the H-12 lodging tax fund. The City of International Falls regular claims is $544,780.96. Airport commission claims of $35,744.48. Airport capital claims, or capital project claims, $3,900. And Phase III runway reconstruction, $234,935.23. For a total of accounts payable of $819,360.67. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So, second?
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward to the council? Please come forward and state your name and address. And you're welcome to sit down or take the mic. Either way, it just needs to be a little bit closer to your face.
Yards have been tore up for most of a year. Three-week project. Job started on. Has not been done. Gas company, Grand Rapids, and the head of the gas company said it was KGM's project to clean up. And nothing got done. They called engineer Lameji. Said he'd make sure it gets done. And it's never been done. He finally, the second time, he told me to call Joe Sutherland. Joe said he'd be right out tomorrow, the next day. That's been two weeks. He hasn't done anything about it. So I talked to Leon about it, and he went over the project and seeing what people's yards are and stuff. There's just no excuse for it. I was a contractor, and I know how these things go. And all I want to know is if you people are going to have them do it, otherwise, I'm going to do my own yard. My wife is tired, and we can moan around in the gas holes and stuff in our yard, and it's been a year. So, and the neighbors, I'm here, I'm representing the whole job. The local neighbors have asked me to see if we could get something done. And I think it's high time they get at it. I mean, can't see, we haven't had dry weather for, for doing the dirt work.
Fair enough. I think that that's a reasonable request.
Yeah. Woodsith is not wishing them to get it done and stuff. So you people want to probably take a look at Woodsith and see if they're doing their pro, their job.
Okay. Public Works Director, can you give us just some insight on, on the 15th Street project and timing and where we're at?
Woodsith. And I've got KGM. They have the striping. I told them everything else had been done before today. We pulled down a bunch list for all of our local roads, plus 15th Street.
Wasn't that project supposed to be done last year, November?
It's, I thought it was supposed to be done by October 15th.
Yeah. So we probably, the city, being, I'm the city, we probably should start looking at penalty, correct?
When it creates money for this delay and interruptions and stuff. Do you agree?
Comment? Well, you know, that's probably the only way you're going to get them to work, is to start, you know, the, the penalty.
Mr. Mayor, would it be safe to say that the job wasn't completed then? If this, if this work isn't done? And I'm sure we paid them.
You didn't pay them? You haven't paid. He paid for the work that they've done.
Okay.
Not the work that's on skin.
Maybe that's not enough that we need to put into the contract. It's got to be all of them completed.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like he's going to meet with them and something's going to get done. Otherwise, I'm going to do my own yard. I'll fix my own yard up. And then they raised the street. If you drive down, you can see it. Leon was there at my house. They raised the street. Now there's a drop-off on both sides of the road, straight down. It actually should be redid, re-sloped to where they hit their old grade. Joe was going to take a look at it and this and that, but nothing.
Well, our next meeting is in two weeks, which is the 21st, where, where he has the date for the striping. So if we don't have movement on it on the 21st and, and the final project before the striping, we'll, we'll get with you and we'll have a conversation about trying to make this right, so. But the last thing I, we, we need is, is residents to start getting in there and dealing with their own ditches and stuff. So let us, let us try to get this right and get this fixed. And we, we have a meeting in two weeks, and supposedly the striping and everything should happen before then.
We only qualify one.
I, I know I'm not. Thank you so much.
Why, hey, I know, you know how to fix it, if you do it.
Well, it just, it should get done. If not, I'm going to do my own. Why won't you?
All right. I appreciate it.
That isn't going to take care of the whole project.
I understood. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Curry.
Thanks, Leon.
Yep. Just to clarify, I invited Mr. Wagner here to plead his case.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else for public forum? If you're online with us and you, you have a question or you want to bring something to the attention of the council, just make note of that, and we have an opportunity at the end of this meeting.
Mayor, can I interject for one second?
Please.
Okay, just, just some clarity. I had a telephone call just a while ago, and somebody had watched one of our previous council meetings on TV or wherever it may be. And he said, "Do you guys just pick up those packets like we have here and not even look at them when you're voting on them?" And I said, "No, we have them online." And I think that should be made public, that we do see the information before we come here.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I always, it comes as a PDF. We usually get it on Friday. And I always go through the PDF. I don't pick up the physical packet till the day of, but I've read, I've read the agenda. I've read all of the information. So I pick, I leave the physical packet, so I've got it for here. But no, I do read the PDF. It usually shows up right around about noon on Friday. And that way, I've got all weekend to read it.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
If I can add as well, Mayor, we do send out this packet to a lot of individuals that have requested it besides the mayor and council every Friday afternoon. And it is information, public information. And if they want to email us at info@internationalfalls, like, the whole address, Emma.
Info@ci international hyphen falls dot M N dot U S.
We can definitely add them or call the office. We can add anyone onto the mailing list every Friday that goes out, you know, mid to early afternoon every Friday.
It's just such a large file that it's difficult to upload such vast quantities and vast file sizes to our website, so.
I think the, the question was more, do we, as counselors, read it?
Right, do we see this information beforehand?
The answer to that question is absolutely. Usually, the second it shows up on Friday, it dings, and I know it's coming, and that's the first time. And then I look at it again on Monday.
Right.
So no, yeah, I certainly do.
Okay, just clarity. I wanted to make sure that the public knew this.
No, I appreciate that. All right, so we'll go to opening bids and quotes. Approve the low quote for fire department extradition equipment as budgeted items from the fire department, capital outlay, line item 101 dot four one two zero zero dot five six zero zero. A, part A would be extradition tools, Grand Forks fire equipment in the amount of $32,865. Chair would entertain a motion?
We'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Wouldn't it make sense to call the, the chief up and have a conversation about what exactly this stuff is?
Sure. Chief Nasa, come on up.
Just for the public's information, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? Give the brief overview here. So what we're looking for is extrication equipment. We've budgeted for this. This is our hydraulic cutters, spreaders, and rams. So this is what we use in a car accident situation for extrating patient from a proposed situation. Our current equipment is, think about late eighties when it was purchased, so we're definitely due for some new stuff. We have some new technology out there with the batteries that are pretty good. We limited our search to either Omotro or Purse, and the reason being is those are the two top pieces of equipment that we could find. And I just want to explain on the quotations why we only have two quotes. All of this equipment is done through distributor territories. So these are the only quotes we're going to get for these pieces of equipment. So that's why I wanted to explain that. So our two vendors that we're looking at, Grand Forks Fire and Alexair Apparatus, represent two different sections of equipment. And I think, as the mayor was already getting to, the highlighted low quotes are highlighted, sorry, excuse me, on the page here for each piece of equipment. And if there's any questions, I would certainly stand to answer them.
Yes, sir. And this price is still good from March?
Yes. I, I double-checked on Friday, just to make sure. It is volatile, so we're double-checked on that. And that's part of the reason we're ordering now is the, they suffered from some COVID and stuff like that on their distributorship. So they're, they're eight to 12 weeks out on delivery times. We want to make sure we get this order. We have budgeted $75,000 for rescue equipment. This is a portion of that money. But again, we want to get these specific items ordered now because of the heat time off. And we'll be approaching the council again with some more items in the future.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the low quote of $32,865. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next is the rescue struts, Grand Forks fire equipment in the amount of $970.
Move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second by Counselor Bowler.
I would just like to note that four of them, so the total was three thousand.
Eight hundred, okay. $3,880. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. And lifting bags, five bags set with controls in the amount of $6,695. A motion by Counselor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have the consent agenda, which would be hiring of summer employees for the Public Works Department. Connor Sutherland, Melody Rule, and Lucy Kennedy. Chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the Great Up North Triathlon and Five Kerry, Ashley Hall.
I don't believe Ashley's on.
I believe City Administrator, do you have any information? Or is this time sensitive that we need to act on it this evening?
Ashley or Erin were unable to be here this evening due to a conflict of work schedules. They, it's nothing different than they have asked from last year. I did question her on the request of the lifeguards on duty with the ability of helping up or set up and take down and things on Friday, August 20th. And I said, you know, those are not employees of the city. That is something you definitely have to talk with the Rec Commission and Bill Mason about. And Ashley indicated that she would. And outlined that the event is the same as previous. And so if, you know, tonight wouldn't work, if you wanted more information from Ashley, we'd have to schedule it a different evening for her to be available.
I, I would be comfortable moving forward, but I would leave it to the council. I would accept a motion to act on allowing the Great Up North Triathlon as we have in the past.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion, but do we, do we strike the, the lifeguard portion?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah, so we just strike the lifeguard and then that is something we can talk about in the, in the rec.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the, the Great Up North Triathlon request, striking the lifeguards. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion? Just like to say that this has been a good event in the past. Last year, it had to be canceled due to COVID. And I think it's a fantastic event, especially with the people that it does bring into the area. So I look forward to not participating this year. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the mayor's appointment of Michael Koscheck to the position of police chief. Chair would entertain a motion to confirm that appointment?
Oh, okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? City Administrator, do you want to give a, a brief synopsis of the process that we went through for hiring the position?
Yep, we had advertised for the chief police for the City of International Falls. We had received three applicants that met minimum qualifications. We, interview committee met with each of them, interviewed all three. We ranked them, and then we gave that list to the mayor. The mayor then had individual, I believe it was phone conferences with each of the candidates. And then at that time, he chose, and as per our charter, he makes a recommendation and asks for you guys' concurrence with that person to fill that position.
And I think the, the key part of this whole thing is I hadn't asked what the ranking was from the hiring committee until after I made my decision. And it really pulls, pulls forward for the candidate when it was the number one candidate from the hiring committee, and it was the number one candidate from me. And when we both met, it was very clear that Captain Koscheck was going to be the best choice for the police chief moving forward for the city. So I look forward to that. The one, the one piece of it is, is very similar to the city administrator position. We need to have a meeting with the applicant, which would be Captain Koscheck, just to discuss pay. And I would also request that myself, the city administrator, and the city attorney do that as we had for the city administrator position. So with that being said, I would ask for a second motion after we approve the appointment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. So then the second piece of that would just be a motion from the city council to allow the city administrator, the city attorney, and myself to negotiate a salary due to the, or within the constraints of the advertised job description. So the chair would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Please.
We will have to do the same process now. With no civil service in place, we will have to take application and do this, fill the same process.
Okay. As a reminder, when does he, when does Captain Koscheck take over as chief?
July 6th, I believe, is the date, the official last day of current chief.
Would, would it be okay to request an audience with him at the Committee of the Whole Meeting? Perhaps, maybe not the June one that's next week, but the following July, just so we can have a conversation with him as a, as a council? I've got some questions that I'd like to ask in front of the council.
I don't know why not.
Just about what, what he sees where, where we're going, because
I think that would be a great idea.
You see where I'm going? We weren't all in the, so just to, just kind of see where his goals are for the department and where they align with the council goals that we talk about every spring.
I think that's fantastic. I think that's fantastic choice.
Probably in July.
Schedule that for the Committee of the Whole in July.
And typically, I think that the chief, if I remember correctly, is typically there, but it just gives us an opportunity to, well, introduce ourselves to him as chief and then just kind of see where he's at.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask that. Betty, or City Administrator, does that make sense at this time to have a motion to advertise for the captain's position?
Yes, that it would be appropriate at this time.
Please. Okay, we have a motion to advertise for the captain's position from Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, five zero. Motion carries five zero. Anything else to deal with the police department at this time? All right, so we'll move on to approve a second request for reconsideration of pay equity non-compliance. City Administrator, let's give some background on that.
Yes, Mayor, counsel, thank you. During our job class study that Flaherty and Hood is currently conducting for us, they are going through the paperwork, and it was, they've come to their attention that our extension from the non-compliance request for pay equity has expired. And so they reached out to MMB, the Minnesota Management, and asked what the steps were, if just knowing we're in this process was enough, or did we need to request another extension? And they said that they want another extension request from us. Therefore, Flaherty and Hood has put together a second request for consideration and asked for an extension through December 31st of 2021, by which time our job class study will be completed and we'll be moving forward with rolling out whatever the result is of that study.
Okay, so with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to request for reconsideration of pay equity non-compliance.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, adopt a resolution approving airport coronavirus response grant program. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution. We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Now we have the addendum to the resolution that we just passed. So the chair would entertain a motion for, to adopt that resolution. We have a motion by Counselor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to Human Resources Committee. Excuse me. Consider, or I'm sorry, approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of International Falls and the International Union of Operating Engineers, the local 49ers, to combine the dozer and single axle plow truck equipment pieces together as one equipment operator posting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that memorandum of understanding.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve hiring temporary summer employee for the administration department. Chair would entertain a motion for that.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by We have a second by Council Buller. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
This is a non-budgeted item. The individual that I've spoken with is, I'm only asking for about four hours a day for somebody to come in and help me organize my office. I just am overwhelmed and I just can't do it myself. My other staff are overloaded as well. And so just asking for a little bit of help, only a few hours a day, not a full-time person throughout the summer, about four hours each day.
Okay. And ultimately, we would still be under budget in the Administration Department with the loss of the position anyway. So it may be non-budgeted, but should, should still come under cost.
That is correct.
The budget is just a guide.
With that being said, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Handling my Robert Anderson.
We're moving on to number seven. Consider recommendations from the Public Works Committee. Approve the purchase of new play structure from Midwest Playscapes for City Beach with funding from grants to the City Beach Citizens Advisory Committee and budgeted park and recreation funds. Chair would entertain a motion for the purchase of the play structure. We have a motion by Council Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Council Holden. Discussion? Just, I just would like to say thank you to the Public Works Director. This has been something that has been lingering for probably three years, if not four. The City Beach Advisory Committee had gotten some funds to purchase new equipment years ago. However, it wasn't enough to actually purchase any equipment. So because of that money that had just been sitting there and their willingness to try to utilize funds to make the beach better, there were funds that were able to come out of the Parks and Recreation. I believe that there's also some monies that are coming from the REC Commission to bring in an ADA compliance swing out there. So just kudos to Public Works for being able to make this happen and being able to move forward with and finishing, yet again, one more thing that's just been lingering there for the last couple of years. So thank you. Please.
Also, kudos to the Public Works Department and Mike Wallace for ending this set. This is a $31,000, what we're paying for, and it's a $12,000 discount. Order and it's going to be way out. Order this right away, it's $12,000.
And one more thing, this is the first time that due to COVID, we're going to be able to have it installed early because they have it on hand and they don't have to wait for anything. So it's getting installed within the next week or two, rather than, you know, six months out or next year. Three weeks? It's getting installed very soon. Tomorrow.
In time for the first snow. There we go.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have request Rainier Recreation Commission to remove the piano under the pavilion at City Beach due to its poor condition. Chair would entertain that motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Council Deach. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Holden. Discussion? So this, this came from some of the City Beach meetings that I've been at. We actually met underneath the pavilion last time. And this piano is in very, very bad shape. In fact, one might say blight. And it's a safety hazard. There is chipped wood all the way around it. If you were to run your hand on it, you were definitely going to get a sliver, if not rip part of the wood off of the piano. It's, it's in that bad a shape. One of the, one of the things that we, we've been doing is trying to find out who we need to contact for this. This is another one of those situations where we have an organization that donates something to the city. And once it gets donated to the city, then we, that we, who owns it? Who, you know, there's names on it. We contacted the person whose name is on it and they're like, well, why are you calling me about this? And so the, the point of the story is, you know, we need to accept donations and when they are accepted, they are ours. And when the time goes, we need to get rid of them. And that's what's happened with this piano. So it just needs to go. Any other discussion? Please. Yes. Rainier REC. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, is there any reason why we can't just remove it? Or does it technically belong to them kind of thing? Or where are we at?
That's the question.
We don't know. We don't really know.
And we just want to make sure that whoever does own it has the opportunity to take it.
Prior to
I don't want somebody to pull up there a week after we did it and say, where's the piano now?
So in the event that they don't want to remove it, we will.
Yes, we will. Yeah, it'll be open. We just want to make sure that
If somebody in fact owns it, they have an opportunity to come and claim it. That makes sense.
Deal with the dark. Here's that, that was removed from Pat Roach Landing 12 years earlier. We finally got rid of it and they showed up one day at work.
Did you have to dig it up?
No, we had to pay for it. So. So we have a motion and a second to request Rainier REC Commission to remove the piano. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Approve the low quote from Complete Comfort Systems for a unit heater at the street garage as a budgeted item. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the low quote. We have a motion by Council Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Kraus. And for the record, the low quote was $5,817. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve the low quote from Adam McIntyre for the painting of 50 street poles and the repairs and painting of the Smokey Bear statue as budgeted items. Again, that quote is $24,995. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that quote. We have a motion by Council Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Council Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the council? Then we'll go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney Department Head, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a follow-up to the news that we received last week for, with the journal being closed at the end of the month, I have pulled our Home Rule Charter, which, you know, outlines how we need to publish our official legal documents. I have reached out to the League of Minnesota Cities with whatever information I get there. I'll be meeting with Steve and then I'll have a recommendation or additional information for this group at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, the 14th.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have provided an updated report of the pending criminal cases for blight. We're making good progress on those. A number of cases in court tomorrow. Again, I have almost daily contact with the Fire Marshal moving forward on these. I don't have anything to add to the report unless there's any questions. The other item that I would mention, I didn't respond when Kurt Wagner raised, you know, the question to me. And I have not been involved at all with this contract or any of the delays or failures to comply. But certainly, it is an option that the city has. If they've not complied with the requirements of their construction contract, there typically are a percentage that's held back from final payment. And there oftentimes are delay penalties that are part of the contract. And so if that becomes an issue, it's certainly something that we can look at before we make the final payment to them.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for the City Attorney? I was just curious if we got the, the posting ready for the property maintenance code? Has that been taken care of? Yep.
That was published in the paper, oh, two, two weeks ago, maybe?
Okay, so it must have happened
It's in effect. It is, it is now in effect.
Okay.
I think it might have been, was it last Thursday? So it became effective Friday or the Thursday before. But it's, it's definitely now in effect.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it, at the last
It's now our, the old ordinances, those portions have been revoked and we're now under that.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Department Heads?
We want to underscore the traded with some of our projects. We did not have our pre-con for our 2020 local roads, 15th Street MSA until July 22nd of last year. Okay, so we're less than 12 months. Nobody has been paid for work they haven't done. Okay? Liquidated damages on a road project are, I would say, nobody's over, you know, it was October 15th was the blacktop. They met substantial completion. I've tasked the engineers. I know we've done a, we did our punch list for Pleasant Avenue water line. I've tasked them with getting our punch list for 2020 local roads and 15th Street MSA done by the end of the week. So we are, the, the struggle I think is, people don't realize, we had spring, the middle of March. Okay, I sent our sweeper down to get refurbished February and March. Figuring it'd be a good time to get it done. I didn't think we'd have people calling wanting us to sweep streets the 20th of March. Okay, I, I know Leon called, you called about some piled material on Shorewood. With the road limits on, I couldn't even get there for a month and a half. So the spring has started early. It's 80, 90 degrees, people on. And I'm very aware of that. I'm not downplaying that at all whatsoever. It's just, we're going to get it done and it's going to happen very soon. But it's June and it's 90 degrees, which usually is not, you know, spring started early this year. So we're going to get it done and we're going to get it done to everybody's satisfaction also.
Since we have you up here, can you give an update about some of the roads that need to be watered? Because we've had a handful of complaints about that. And I know that it's came up at Public Works, but just, just to give the information of the, the roads on dirt roads?
Right now, it's been at least 12 years since we've tried to do dust control on roads ourselves. So we've pulled the equipment out, trying to do it. We've, we've moved on from, I, I started a month ago trying to get our dust control company up here to put magnesium chloride on our dirt. They've dropped the ball several times. Our phone is ringing off the hook non-stop. We've got another vendor lined up that's supposed to be here Thursday, Friday this week. But we have an employee out there that that's all he's doing is watering gravel roads right now. It's not the best, but we're not set up for it. And it's just a unique situation with the road construction we have going on, people choosing to go on the pedestrian detour. And then when they get to the end and realize that there's no place for them to go, they tend to leave at a higher rate of speed and dust. And it's, it's, I understand the frustration and I'm not, you know, but we're well aware of it. We're doing the best we can. But, you know, our, our vendor let us down that we've used forever, won't even return phone calls now. So we've moved on to a different vendor, but he can't get to us till Thursday or Friday. And hopefully that will cut down on the dust. Usually we do dust control once, maybe twice a year. And it's, it's late June, early July before we have to do our first application. Then depending on, we may get another in August, September, depending on what the weather's like. And pretty much, I think I'm going to get set up to do it once a month through the summer, just because of the, the odd weather conditions we're having. You know, it's, it's tough. And we're just not, we don't have the equipment to set up to do it. I don't want to say we're going to go out and buy the equipment unless this gets to be a regular occurring deal. But we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Thank you. Any questions for the Public Works Director? Please.
I've got a positive. We need to hear a positive once in a while, not only for you, but for the whole city. I live in, in Saltland National Falls, as you know, that's my word. And I drive around a lot. And the Carson Loopy Playground is coming along beautifully.
Our, our plan is, is to get that one done and we're going to go over and do the same thing at 8th Street. So
Looks good.
We're moving along. So, yeah, looks good.
That's two compliments in one meeting. Awkward.
And we do get, we do get lots of compliments. We, you know, the thing is, we're aware of these issues. It's just some of the stuff we just can't get to right away, or it's beyond our control. And I encourage any citizen to call me, see if they have any issues.
I encourage many citizens to call you too.
Me too.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Stay cool.
Chief Minister, did you want to bring anything forward?
The only thing I have is we've been a little bit busier on the person. I have other ones left. Be cautious, be aware of the situation, weather. Again, just a little busier than normal. So please do, do care.
All right, thank you. There's, the blight report was in your, your packet today. Also, we have the EMS and fire reports in there. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Does anyone have anything to bring forward today? I, I would just like to say that we have two things that we're working on, that, that I'm working on that is not coming directly to the council. So I'd just like to give a quick update of the 4th of July Committee. We are going to be having a kitty parade, a parade, vendors in the park. We have beer gardens. We, I am, we are struggling to come up with a band to play for the street dance on the 3rd. I've contacted three, three people. All of those have got back with me that they are not available for that evening. So we're still struggling to find music entertainment for the 3rd. And historically, Rainy Lake Orchestra has played in the afternoon on the, the 4th. And that is looking like that may not happen this year. So music is becoming an issue for the 4th of July. I say this to the council, if you know anyone that would be interested in, in doing stuff for the 4th, we would greatly appreciate those names and phone numbers. That goes for the residents of the area as well. I, I am unique in the fact that I organize along with the other folks from I Falls Nice, the Wednesday Music in the Park. We do have some people that I'm going to contact if, if we can't find anyone on the 4th. I think we can, I think that one is going to be more simplistic to fill, just music in the afternoon. But the, the band for the 3rd is becoming a challenge. So if you know of anyone, that would be fantastic. If, if you don't, we may go to a DJ just so we have music available that evening. But that is serving to be a challenge. that is serving to be a challenge. The second group that I'm, I'm working with on behalf of the city is the City Beach Commission or Advisory Board, and it just came to my attention today that we will not be able to have lifeguards for the month of June. We, it, it's that, that thing, it's hard to get people, there's a, a backup with, well, there's not a backup, there's no students that are interested in taking the classes and getting certified, and the ones that are interested in being certified will not be certified until July. So that's going to be a swim at your own risk for City Beach moving forward. I believe Betty got that same email today. So those are the two things that I have, that, that we're working with. We are meeting, I believe, this Thursday at 5:00 for the 4th of July Commission, or is that next week?
Next week.
Next week. So if you come up with any names before next Thursday, that would be fantastic to get us out. We want to have some publishing put out for the 4th of July between now and the 24th of June, so kind of in a time crunch, but I think we're going to pull it off, so. I have nothing else. If there's nothing else, I believe we'll go to audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the attention of the council. Hearing none, we'll go to your correspondence. There's the Airport Commission meeting minutes, the National Park Service letter for Voyager's National Park, Minnesota Energy Damage Prevention Reminder, call before you dig, 811, and Minnesota Department of Health and Blue Cross Blue Shield Vaccination Bus is scheduled to be in International Falls on June 14th from 4:00 to 7:00. And as I understand it, that is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, so that would be one shot, so you wouldn't have to go and get a booster. So if there's any residents, anybody that would like to get their vaccination shot and not have to go back to get a booster, this would be the time to do it, June 14th from 4:00 to 7:00. Hearing nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting.